Okay.
And then.
Okay, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to let you know that Commissioner Herman is on the line.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Um, so I, I assume we'll do roll call for each jurisdiction and then, um, I will read our normal opening announcement, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, and then we do have two emailed in public comments that I will read. One is a little bit long, so if I don't get through it, we'll just include everything in the record, um, and then field public comment like we normally would.
Um, I know there's at least one call in public comment.
Okay.
Lisa, this is Ashley from Reno. Um, just to let you know, I've let my mayor know my recommendation is just to hand all of the public comment components over to Sparks since you are hosting. So when we get to that section, we will just identify that all public comment for all three entities will be handled by your body because you are super capable of handling it for all of us.
Perfect.
And then we're gonna ask if you're not an elected that you, uh, turn your video so you go to the back screen. That includes the managers.
And then, um, I am not sure who, I'm not, I'm not positive if we have everybody. Um, Ashley, can you confirm that all of your council people are on in Washoe County?
I don't see all of Washoe County.
You.
Ashley, you're muted.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, you do not have all of Reno at this time. You have Councilman Delgado and everyone else is working to get on, so we would respectfully request a few more minutes to get everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You said you could only see 12 people at a time.
Or a, well, I don't know.
If you go into your settings under video and you go to advanced, it will expand it up to 49 people.
Oh.
Wow.
That would have been handy to know a couple of weeks ago.
Well, I just, so you understand, I just figured it out yesterday, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe, yes, it's in settings under video, under advanced.
All right, we'll have to do that for the next time, but.
Okay.
We'll just deal with what we have.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sheevy.
I think you're muted, Hillary.
You'd think I would know this by now. We all should be Zoom experts, right? How, how are you guys doing?
Living the dream.
Living the dream. I like it. I like it.
Abby?
Looking good. Looking good. Mr. Delgado, hi.
Good to see you, Mayor. Good to see you. Good to see everybody.
Good to be seen.
Right.
Okay, so, um, Mayor Lawson, I, um, I guess we're gonna let you, um, be the, the host. We would love for you to do that, so you just let us know what you need, um, from me and we'll, we'll follow you.
Okay, we're asking right now if we have quorums for each of the entities from our clerks.
I see I've got two.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum for Reno, so we can call it to order whenever, uh, the other entities.
I got four. I got four.
Mr. Lucy, do you have a quorum?
I believe I have three thus far.
You got four, Bob.
Oh, I got four.
On the phone.
And I think I've got Commissioner John calling in, but she's not already on the phone.
Okay, well, then we'll go ahead and get started. We're just, we, only three minutes past the hour, so we're good.
Mr. Mayor. I'm in.
From the City of Sparks.
Mayor Lawson?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Acting City Attorney Duncan?
Here.
City Manager Croods?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Mister?
Good, Mayor Lawson. Um, clerk, uh, Mr. Manager or Clerks, can I get a roll call for the Washoe County Commission, please? I don't know if I have a clerk on. Do I have a clerk on, Mr. Manager?
All right, well, I can do it. How about, uh, Herman? Commissioner Herman, are you there? Okay, we heard her earlier. Hartong?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Jung?
I'm here. I just was muted again. I didn't realize.
Okay, Commissioner Jung? Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Chair, you got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawson. We have, Mayor Lawson, we have a, a quorum of the County Commission.
Mayor Sheevy?
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for the Reno City Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, roll call for Reno City Council for the special concurrent meeting of January 20th, Brekkas.
Here.
Thank you, Dewar.
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Weber? Is absent at this time. Madam Mayor, Jordan?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Sheevy?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, I'm gonna ask Rich Brown to put the flag up and I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilman Abbott to lead us in the pledge.
I'm muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, uh, let's go to public comment and we'll start off by our, our normal disclosure.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, good afternoon and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until the further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. This meeting will use Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meeting, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. We are not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and 10. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will, you will be called on to speak one at a time by the name or telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember that any comments or questions cannot be addressed by, or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And if you would like to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand function.
Mr. Mayor, um, I have my clerk for the Washoe County Commission waiting, um, in the attendee room, waiting to be admitted as a participant.
So, we need to bring her on?
What is the clerk's name?
Jay Glassini.
Sure, let me bring her over.
And, uh. Is Commissioner Jung in the waiting room also?
Um, I am trying to confirm that right now with her, I believe.
She should, she should be, Bob.
I think it's the, uh, um, let me confirm.
I can't see any more numbers.
Mr. Chair, do we need to have the clerk redo our roll so that it's on the record?
Um, I, let me confirm that with the chair, the clerk. Ms. Glassini, are you available now?
Glassini.
I apologize for the inconvenience, sir.
This is difficult when we're all in person. It's a little more difficult via technology.
Oh, yeah, let me tell you. Ms. Glassini, can you, can you hear us or are you able to participate and do you need a call roll again for your record, ma'am?
I'm muted.
I see you in there. She's on mute. I, I don't believe so. We've got it on record. It's recorded. Uh, we'll move forward and if she has a challenge, we can move back. Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna, uh, change the proceedings and I will check with Commissioner Jung, uh, and follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so Madam Clerk, let's go ahead with, uh, public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So our first public comment is from telephone number 775-287-7332. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hey, good afternoon, uh, Mayor Lawson and Commissioners, council members. For the record, this is Andrew Dis, Vice President of Government Affairs from the Grand Sierra. Um, today, as you contemplate with the future structure of the Health District will look like, I want to provide some feedback that may help you in your decision-making. As you're aware, this past summer, legislature granted extraordinary authority to the Health District through SB 4 to enforce COVID mitigation guidelines. And our team members have gone to great lengths to ensure that we are keeping our guests safe and that we're meeting all the new mandates required by the state. We conduct constant education and continual performance improvement with our team members to make sure that we're always in compliance. But the reality is that sometimes we don't do things perfectly and we get cited by the Health District for a violation. Fortunately, these citations have only been for minor violations, but it has brought to our attention some of the shortcomings in the current appeals process. So as you meet today, we ask that you consider setting up a clear appeals process that allows us to appeal to a different body than the one that gave us the original citation. We also ask that only repetitive events be subject to a fine. If we continually make the same mistake, then yes, hold us accountable. But finding a business for a minor first offense is akin to pouring salt on the wound when our business levels have already been severely curtailed by 25% occupancy restrictions. OSHA serves as a good example of how inspections should work because they give us a warning for our first offense as long as we haven't been negligent and allow us to self-correct and educate our workforce before a fine is issued. Our highest priority is the safety of our team members and our guests, and everyone on our team, from our frontline staff all the way up to our GM, is keenly aware of the microscope that our industry in particular is under. And we take our responsibility of proving to visitors from all over the world that Nevada is a safe place to visit. And we hope that you consider these simple changes and that we can easily fix things. And I want to thank you and all your staff at the cities and the counties for all the work you've been doing to keep our communities safe. We know it's extremely stressful, and I just want to close by saying we want to do everything we can to work collaboratively with the Health District, including offering up our large parking lot at the Grand Sierra or any of our vacant convention space as a community vaccination site if you guys need that. So that's all my comments. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from telephone number 857-472-1556. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Anne Marie Grant, for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, hogtied by Reno police officers, Christopher Good, David Tolman, Jorge Aparicio, and Officer Maxwell, then dumped at the Washoe County Jail while still hogtied and asphyxiated to death by deputies Brendan Glenn, Paul Hubble, Andre Silva, under the direction of Wayne Westerland. This was all while the county commissioners were neglecting their duties under NRS 211.020. My brother Thomas Purdy was not the only man who died while they were neglecting their obligations. Justin Thompson also was asphyxiated to death by deputies, as well as Nico Smith. Every day I live my life and I have to hear my brother begging for his life and the incompetent deputies not heeding his plead that he could not breathe, that he was going to die, that he needed medical attention. My brother's crime was trespassing at the Pepper Mill Casino where he was a guest at. He asked for help. Instead of helping him, your Reno PD hogtied him for 40 minutes. With the Rip Hubble device, every single page of the manual states never used to hogtie a human being. This summer I came out and had a, an event for local families because there's so many of us in Washoe County who have had a loved one murdered by your police department. And Reno Police, four officers stood across in the garage and laughed while families who had had a loved one killed poured their heart out, shared their truth, and your officers stood there and laughed. That's how much respect they have for human life. Do better, all of you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
I'm not showing anything additional in the attendee section, Mr. Mayor, however, I do have two emails to read in. The first email is from Cameron Harris. Looks like Ward 1 for the City of Reno. It has been 119 days since I have been reporting illegally parked and abandoned vehicles on West Fourth Street to the city and state. According to NRS Chapter 487A, abandoned vehicles constitute a safety hazard and a public nuisance and are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. B, such vehicles produce scenic blight which degrades the environment and adversely affects the proper maintenance and continuing development of the state. I have brought these issues up to the NHP, RPD, and the City of Reno. They have literally taken no steps to enforce state or local codes. My elderly parents have been watching strangers strip the abandoned vehicles of parts not even 30 yards from where they sleep. NHP has an MOU with the City of Reno which designates West Fourth Street as in the jurisdiction of Reno and the jurisdiction of RPD. Yet RPD has no intention of claiming these vehicles their responsibility. Reno Direct won't pass this on to code enforcement or any other supervising department, and I am at my wits' end. There are at least 13 vehicles illegally parked on the side of State Route 647 and are violating no less than 13 municipal codes each day, which would add up to no less than 1,400 violations over the last two years. I have photographs that date back to 2018 of the vehicles violating local and state codes. These vehicles are legally and technically a safety hazard and are inhibiting the progress of the State of Nevada.
Thank you.
The next public comment, the email is quite long. I will do my best to get through it in three minutes. Um, if I am unable to, it will be, uh, the full email will be included in the record for everybody. This one is from Dr. John Novak from the District Board of Health. There are a number of processes that have been established for people that are aggrieved by decisions made by the Health District or who are seeking waivers from the requirements of the Health, the Health District. Several of these are appellate bodies that are established by the District Board of Health and some are appeals processes that involve the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. The District Board of Health hears the appeals that come through the process established by the board. The appeals boards have been in existence for over 30 years and have provided an opportunity for individuals and businesses to appeal Health District decisions and seek variances from regulatory requirements. The appeal process for SB 4 was created by WCHD since it was not included in the state 447E regulations. All facilities are provided the opportunity to appeal within 10 days of issuance of their written citation. If there is no resolution from the appeal process, the appeal will go to the DBOH for a final determination. To date, that has not occurred. The DBOH Sewage, Wastewater, and Sanitation Board review and provide a determination on any appeal and/or variance that is brought forth resulting from either a septic or domestic well issue. WCHD would provide an opinion of either neutral, in favor, or against to the SWS Board for their review. Upon completion of the SWS review, their recommendation goes to DBOH for approval. These items typically appear on the consent agenda. The regulations establishing the SWS Board and its functions are codified in District Board of Health Regulations 170.010 through 170.045. Any appeal or request for variance from the NAC 445A Construction Regarding Water Systems would require a review and approval from NDEP in order for WCHD to proceed with the process. For individual oversight and permitting of water systems, that process would also be through NDEP Bureau of Safe Drinking Water, but a different group than the one that reviews engineering and construction. Administrative review of action taken by the division or appropriate district board of health is addressed in 445A dot 66645 for water system construction requirements and in 445A dot 491, 445A dot 519, and 445A dot 614 for permitting and operations of water systems. Members of the Food Safety Hearing and Advisory Board, FSHAB, are appointed by the District Board of Health to serve as needed when an appeal or variance hearing is required. Any food establishment subject to Washoe County District Board of Health Regulations governing food establishments can appeal a notice of violation or inspection finding by submitting a written request within 10 business days of receiving the notice of violation. The FSHAB makes a finding and recommendation to the District Board of Health to make the final decision to sustain, modify, or rescind the notice of violation or order. The District Board of Health may also refer the appeal back to the Food Protection Hearing and Advisory Board for additional consideration. The regulations establishing the FSHAB Board and its functions are codified in District Board of Health Regulations 240.085 through 240.110. Any source that has been aggrieved by the Air Quality Management Division.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have another, uh, written?
That is it, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not showing any additional requests for public comment at this time.
And just to be sure, we check with the other clerks to make sure you guys don't have any other public comments that we've missed.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm hearing none, so, uh, we'll move on to item five, approval of the agenda. And, uh, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Uh, Ms. Byby?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve today's agenda for our concurrent meeting.
Second by, second by Vanderwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And, uh, there's, uh, Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as posted for the concurrent meeting for Washoe County Commission.
So moved Hartong.
A motion from Commissioner Hartong. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hartong. All those in, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries with all Commissioners, uh, in attendance voting.
Mr. Chair, is, is Commissioner Jung, I'm sorry, is, has, have they let her in yet?
Um, to my understanding, she is still in the waiting room. Um, I need the city clerk from Sparks to move her over.
She's a 775-560 number, so if we could, if we could look for that and, and allow her in, that would, um.
I believe it's the 7152 number.
Perfect. I will get over to it right now.
Okay, let's move on to the City Reno, Mayor Sheevy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, may I get a motion to approve the agenda from the Reno City Council?
Listen to approve.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
All those, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, minutes of the last meeting. I, I see we have none. Um, I would think we would, but you might help me out here. We did have a concurrent meeting.
We did.
And so.
Mr. Mayor, it was, uh.
Address that or go ahead?
It was established that the minutes, because they are from separate entities, would be approved at our normal, uh, regular council meeting. They are on our meeting for January 25th.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's move on to, uh, presentations, item 7.1. And I see Allison McCormick is here to make that presentation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and good afternoon, council members and Commissioners. I'm Allison McCormick, Assistant City Manager for the City of Sparks. I'm before you today with two closely related agenda items. The first is a presentation on how the Washoe County Health District was established and the structure and membership of the District Board of Health. The second item describes possible changes to the Health District and its board that the agencies could pursue and gives the agencies the opportunity to give their respective staffs direction regarding those potential changes. With that, I'll get into the first item. Uh, the Health District was established pursuant to a 1972 interlocal agreement between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County. Health districts like the Washoe County Health District are governed in general by NRS Chapter 439. The interlocal agreement from 1972 has been amended a handful of times. Relevant here, uh, the agreement was overhauled and rewritten in its entirety in 1986, and it was last amended in 1993. That 1993 amendment was relatively short. It changed just two subsections, Sections 2D and 2E regarding membership on the board. Generally speaking, the board consists of seven members, two members from each jurisdiction, plus one physician member who is appointed by the rest of the board. That's pursuant to both Section 2 of the agreement and NRS 439.390. The district health officer is then appoint, is then appointed by the board pursuant to NRS 49.400. Specifically as to board membership, uh, there are kind of two issues that the agreement creates. Uh, first is who can be a board member. Pursuant to NRS 439.390 Subsection 1, the board must consist of two members appointed by the governing body of the county, city, or town in which they reside. State law provides no limit on the number of elected officials on the board. It could be no elected officials, one from each jurisdiction, or two from each jurisdiction, or any mix thereof. Uh, and then the seventh member who must be a physician licensed to practice medicine in the State of Nevada. But Sections 2B, C, and D of the agreement add an additional limitation beyond those required by state law. That is that only one of each jurisdiction's appointees may be an elected official. So, under the interlocal agreement, only three of the seven board members, or potentially four if the physician was also an elected official, uh, could be elected. In addition, uh, board members' terms are not defined by Nevada law, but Section 2F of the agreement does create a four-year term of office for each board member. Current members who are not elected officials are Dr. Reka Danko. She is the physician member and her term expires in December of 2022. Michael Brown is Reno's non-elected board member. His term also expires in December of 2022. Dr. John Novak similarly is Sparks's non-elected board member and his term also expires in December of next year. Washoe County's non-elected board member is Tom Young. His term expired in December of 2020. However, Section 2, uh, 2F of the agreement, in addition to providing for four-year terms of office, also says that when a term, when a term of office expires, the member shall continue to serve until his successor is appointed and qualifies. So Mr. Young may continue to serve until either he is reappointed or a successor is appointed. That concludes my presentation on the first. I, I don't. Uh, I'm happy to. Turning that second item. The, the, the expression.
The word expression. Uh, Mr. Hartong, you have a question?
I, I do, and I don't want to get too far away from this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. McCormick, can you, you mentioned 1993 when the membership was changed. Do you know what the membership was? Uh, the makeup of the membership prior to 1993, uh, when that was, was made?
So in the 1986 overhaul, um, Section 2C of the agreement, uh, with regards to Sparks's board members, said that, uh, only one of Sparks's appointees could be an elected member. Uh, however, um, Section, Section E and Section, or Subsection 2B and 2E did not contain those limitations as to the City of Reno and Washoe County. Uh, so the 1993 amendment added those limitations on elected membership to, uh, to apply to both City of Reno and Washoe County. Uh, it's not clear to me why those provisions were added, uh, going back to uh, the way the statutes were written, um, prior to that amendment. Uh, there was no requirement for, or no, no limitation in prior versions of state law uh, for, um, oh, to only have one elected official. Um, so it's, it's unclear why those limitations were initially put into effect.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCormick. That, that really helps me out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and there's nothing like having, uh, an update every, what, 28 years? Thank you.
If you'll just raise your hand for me if you have a question, and just like that, I can see you, and I'll be happy to call on you. Okay. Well, then we'll move on. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to, uh, 8.1, General Business.
All right.
Consideration Discussion of Possible Direction to Staff to Negotiate or Propose Amendments to the Interlocal Agreement concerning the Washoe County Health District. Uh, Ms. Breckus?
I apologize. I, I did have a question. I, I thought she was going to go on with a little more detail. And to me, the, um, the governance is intrinsically, uh, related to the functions that the Board of Health does and performs, which I've always, um, considered a little bit of a catch-all. And I have one question in particular. The, um, National, um, Air Quality Act is one of the nation's hallmark environmental laws. It was adopted in 1970. Um, how, because the Board of Health was in existence then, how did the air quality function come in if it wasn't subject to a, um, interlocal agreement amendment? Because it's the regulating body of this national law for our region.
So the Health District was established in 1972, which would be after that, that legislation.
Okay, so it came in, it's, it's initiating power was regulating that act?
Uh, I, not that I'm aware of, no.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, of all the functions, I think there's, do you have a timeline for when each of those were assigned to the Board of Health and what it does?
Uh, I do not have a timeline for when each of the, the Board of Health's functions were assigned to it, no.
So I, I guess I'm trying to understand, so the Board of Health was formed, it's been amended, its duties have grown over time, but who assigned those to the Board of Health?
Uh, the Nevada Legislature and its various, uh, administrative agencies through regulations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to 8.1, General Business, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and good afternoon again. Uh, for the record, I'm Allison McCormick, Assistant City Manager for the City of Sparks. Uh, as you are all aware, at the last concurrent meeting in November, uh, some elected officials expressed interest in looking at how the board is structured and potential changes that could be made to it. Uh, the purpose of this agenda item is to provide uh, each of the jurisdictions the opportunity to discuss potential changes they would like to see and to give direction to their respective staff, how to make changes. Uh, in looking at this issue, staff identified four potential avenues for change. Uh, those in order are to pack the board or add members to it, to create a general appellate body within the Health District, to terminate the agreement, thereby terminating the Health District and then establishing a new Health District, or to amend the agreement. Uh, for reasons I'll get into in a few moments, amending the agreement is the only option that staff identified as being a viable one uh, if the three jurisdictions do choose to make changes to the Health District. Uh, the first option, packing the board, uh, would be to add members, potentially elected officials from each jurisdiction. Uh, however, NRS 439.390 Subsection 1 is very clear that each jurisdiction only gets two members, uh, plus the physician member. That serves, uh, one major purpose, to keep an odd number of officials on a board that has to vote on matters, uh, so that there's not a tied vote on a regular basis. Uh, adding members would violate state law, so that frankly is not an option. Uh, the next option that staff looked at was to establish a general appellate body within the Health District. Uh, appeals are allowed in specific contexts within NRS Chapter 439. For example, a health facility may appeal sanctions to the State Board of Health. A health information exchange may, may appeal from a decision of the Department of Health and Human Services Director regarding certain certifications that are required by state law. Uh, entities may appeal from disciplinary decisions from the Division of Public and Behavioral Health. Entities may, or, excuse me, individuals may appeal from denial of certain substances by the Department of Health and Human Services. Um, and a person who requests a variance from a district board of health can appeal to the State Board of Health from that denial. Uh, in addition, there are appeals outlined, uh, within a health district by certain specific provisions, and that's similar to what you heard in Dr. Novak's letter during the public comment period. Uh, for example, as Dr. Novak said, uh, SB four from the 32nd Special Session in the middle of last year authorized the Health District to take certain enforcement actions related to COVID-19 and public accommodations. Uh, NRS 444.190, uh, has provisions regarding enforcement of sanitation regulations, and, uh, NRS 446.940 allows the Board of Health to adopt regulations regarding food establishments. And then NRS 445B, 275, uh, provides for a district board of health to establish an air pollution control hearing board. Uh, so in all of those circumstances, there are appeals provided for either to state agencies or within the Health District with regards to specific subject matters. Uh, the powers of a district board of health, like ours, are set out in NRS 439.410 and NRS 439.360. Those don't include general appellate powers or the authority to establish a general appellate body. Now, one could argue that because nothing expressly prohibits the Board of Health from establishing a, a general appellate body within the Health District, the board could make one, or the parties could amend the agreement to establish one. Uh, in my view, however, the stronger argument is that because specific types of appeals are described in detail in Nevada law, other types of appeals or appellate bodies are probably not permitted. Uh, I'll spare you my attempt at Latin, but the statutory, the statutory interpretation principle at play here is the expression of one thing is the exclusion of another. In other words, if the legislature says that appeals are allowed in circumstances A, B, and C, the implication is that appeals aren't allowed in circumstances X, Y, and Z. Uh, because Nevada law expressly allows some types of appeals in the context of a Health District, a generalized appellate body within the Health District probably is not allowed. So that sort of forecloses the extra appellate body option that staff identified. Uh, the next option, though certainly not a good one, would be to terminate the agreement. Uh, that would have the effect of terminating the Health District. Uh, that's not recommended in general or specifically right now. Uh, the Health District is the only body that is authorized by state law to perform certain functions, uh, and the cities and the county lack the staff or infrastructure to perform those functions without the support of the Health District. Uh, in the midst of a global pandemic, we, uh, effectively performing those functions is more important than ever. Uh, so terminating right now in particular, uh, is not advised. Uh, if the councils and the commission wanted to terminate regardless, um, a new Health District would have to be approved by the State Board of Health, and frankly, they are a little bit busy right now, uh, so that approval would probably take several months. Uh, despite those issues, if the governing bodies wanted to terminate the agreement and the Health District as a result, uh, there are two methods for doing so. Uh, any party could terminate at the end of this year uh, with at least 15 days' written notice, uh, from one of the parties for any reason or no reason at all. Uh, so that would have the effect of terminating the, the agreement and help, the Health District at the end of 2021. If there were cause for termination, like one of the parties had breached the agreement, then another party could terminate the agreement with 60 days' written notice. Uh, there's no allegation regarding any of the parties, uh, which would be the two cities and the county having breached the agreement, so there is no basis to terminate the agreement for cause. Uh, for those reasons, termination is neither advised nor simple. Um, so that leaves amending the agreement as the only really feasible way to make changes to the Health District or its board if that's what the parties would like to do. Uh, amending the agreement would require, um, approval of an amendment by each of the jurisdictions at least 90 days before the renewal date. The renewal date is January, January 1st of each year, so that makes the amendment deadline October 2nd of any given year. Uh, the governing bodies may direct their staffs to negotiate amendments to bring back before each of the governing bodies for approval. That could be done in either another, another concurrent meeting or in separate meetings of each of the governing bodies. Uh, Section 7C of the agreement also requires that the District Board of Health annually review the agreement and recommend changes to the three jurisdictions. To allow the board's participation, the governing bodies could either direct their staffs to negotiate a proposed amendment and then bring that before the board, uh, for their review and recommendation before the governing bodies consider that amendment. Or the three governing bodies could simply request that the board review the agreement and recommend any changes that the board sees fit. If the jurisdictions choose to pursue amendments, amendments could do things like change membership requirements to, to mere Nevada law. Uh, they could change the name of the Washoe County Health District to better communicate that it's a separate entity from Washoe County. Uh, Northern Nevada Health District has been a name that was thrown around. Um, or it could provide general updates, given that the agreement was last, uh, rewritten in its entirety in 1986 and last amended in 1993. Uh, if the governing bodies want to make changes to the Health District and the board, and to be clear, that's a proposition on which staff does not take a position. That is up to the governing bodies to decide whether those, whether any changes are needed. Uh, amending the agreement is the recommended way to make any changes, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Hartong, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. McCormick, would also terminating the agreement have the unintended consequence of terminating the franchise agreement with REMZA as well?
Uh, I did not look at that issue, but I suspect it would, uh, given that the, it's my understanding that the Health District is the entity that entered into that franchise agreement. Uh, so if the Health District is no more, which would be the effect of terminating the interlocal agreement, creating the Health District, uh, that franchise agreement would also go away.
Understood. I just wanted to lay that on the table. When you, you know, when you, when you push the, the nuclear button, uh, there's all kinds of unintended consequences that could occur, so I, I, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Dare?
Yes, uh, thank, thank you, uh, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for being here. This is a meeting that I, I've been looking forward to and for a few different reasons. One is I, I think it's important. I, I've been on the Health Board for five years and, and relatively enjoyed it in a lot of ways. I want to say that because the staff and what they do is far-reaching. I think they mention that. It goes, it touches so many different things, from air quality to, um, um, some of our most vulnerable and you name it. It, it hits so many areas. There are a few things where I have found some frustrations, and I don't think they're not, uh, um, I've not been shy about them, so I don't think anybody should be shocked about what I, what the things that I'm concerned about. Um, I don't believe the Health Department should be disbanded. I don't believe, uh, necessary in those things, but I, but I will do want our staff to take a peek and see, and just make sure a few things are in place. Uh, one of them is, I need to know as a board member that whatever is happening on the Health Board, that it, it's not just reporting to us, but it's directed by us. That's a problem sometimes. Uh, I get, uh, and this is where I get probably most frustrated, and it, in the past, it was there, but in during COVID times, it is, it has become extreme a little bit more, where we hear about things that, um, as a Health Board, my name in who we are is attached to it, but we had, we, we didn't decide that. We found out afterwards because it was moving so quickly or whatever, and so some of the reason that potentially having a few more eyes on it during this time or during times like this, whatever, could be helpful, is that we could help direct in our region, help create what's best for our community. And, and with that said, I'm not even shooting at what happened or didn't happen, but the fact is a board helps cover those who they hire. And when people or things step outside of that, whether it's in the paper or whatever, and say things or do things that do not represent us, it's very difficult, and you've had that happen, I'm sure, in other areas that you have served, and I can't, it's not something that I appreciate and it's something I don't like. Now, with that said, there are many redeeming qualities of each, you know, from the director and down, uh, that I have seen and I, I, I would personally, um, even attest to. But I can say I need, uh, uh, what I'm asking for, uh, and I'm still on the Health Board, and I have stayed on there representing Sparks and helping our region. I need that to help. And the other part is the, the appeals portion that I think is, is important, because I, right now, because it's, it's, whenever there's a health thing in place, it's, it almost trumps the conversation. It's like, you know, it's the idea that we have something going on and they say it's for health, because for its health, it just gets, that's just no more conversation about it. And don't get me wrong, that is there, but there are many different ways to arrive and how to do something that needs to be looked at, and not just because somebody said, "Well, it's for health safety." No. I don't want anything that's not healthy or safe for our people, but how we handle and how we treat the constituents in our communities, how we handle our businesses, our developers, everything, that matters to each of us, and it matters to me very much. And so I want to make sure that there could be something in place, if possible, that really helps hold accountable what we, how we want everyone treated as we walk forward. And, and with that said, there are some have great stories, that they're very thankful. We get thankful, we get good letters from, to the Health Board as well, and so it's not that everybody's treated bad. I am not saying that. But there are times that an appeal would be helpful and allow that to move forward and give some accountability to the decisions. Um, I, and I'd say just one final thing. I don't want to take too much time. Um, I, I know that Oscar Delgado also serves, and we've been serving together on Health Board for a long time. He probably has some things to share. Um, but, uh, for me, I have very much appreciated having a restaurateur on there and doctor. I mean, obviously, there's expertise in areas that I don't have, and so I, I, I'm not trying, I, I don't know the right answer, but I know we need to talk about it, because in the very end, whatever's decided here affects every one of us, our constituents, and they actually blame you and me for it. And so, uh, well, especially me, because I'm on the Health Board, but, but also you as, as community leaders, and so those are my concerns. I, I thank you for being here for the conversation, and thank you, Mayor Lawson, for helping pull this together and our other leaders, so those are my, my initial thoughts.
Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, so I, and I, uh, I agree with, uh, Councilman Dare. Um, there needs to be some type of an appeal process. I've had, I've had people call me frustrated over decisions and, and feel like they don't have a uh, an, an easy path forward, uh, to a, to a different board, you know, so as an example, if, if, uh, Sparks or Washoe County or City of Reno's Planning Commission turns something down, uh, there's an appeal to the, the city councils or to the, to the county commission, so it's, it, I, 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 it's just, uh, again, something that has been... It's just a again, something that has been expressed. And then um for Ms. McCormick. Um, my question is, is could we, without going to the legislature, could we require? Uh, change the interlocal agreement so that you had to be, and this isn't a pejorative comment about about uh the job that has been done, but where. The the leadership lies on the board, could we require elected officials to be in the role of chair and vice chair? Thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Allison.
Uh, Commissioner Harton, there there is nothing in state law that uh requires. The chair or vice chair to be not elected or elected. Uh, nothing in state law speaks to who the chair and vice chair may be. Uh, so absolutely, the the chair and vice chair could be. Could be elected officials who are already on the board or if an amendment were to proceed. Um, then people who are not on the board right now. Uh, I don't know what the board's bylaws say as to how the. Uh, chair and vice chair are appointed. Uh, however, the bylaws need not be approved by the legislature. Uh, so it would certainly not take an act of the legislature to change uh the chair and vice chair positions.
But I guess who who determines and and forgive me, Mr. Mayor, who determines the bylaws? Is that through interlocal agreement or is that the district board of health itself?
That is the board itself, uh, and it takes a two thirds vote of the board. Uh, so five of the seven members, since you can't divide seven evenly by three, um, to change those bylaws.
And and so we couldn't change the interlocal agreement and require that?
Uh, you could change the interlocal agreement, but it would also require a change to the bylaws subsequently.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? Um, you know, to me, oh, Miss Stewart, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I just want to make sure I do understand the appeal process. So. It was my understanding that most of the decisions are made by staff. And then those can be appealed to the health board. So I'm a little bit confused about, you know, this discussion. Uh, in in many of our jurisdictions, we have an intermediary staff, which is a hearing officer. Who can either make a final decision or that decision can be appealed to the elected body or the board in this case. So I want to understand when the staff um are, is the staff just making recommendations and then the board? Makes all decisions or are there certain decisions that are made at the staff level and they can already be appealed to the board? And I guess that's for Ms. McCormick.
Sure, thank you. Uh, it really depends on the context. Uh, for example, with regards to air pollution. Issues in that subject matter area would get appealed to the air pollution control hearing board. Um, but other matters would get appealed to different bodies. So I think. Part of the frustration that you heard in public comment from the the Grand Sierra representative. Uh, was that there's not a streamlined single process. Uh, it really depends on which type of appeal you're looking for. Um, and then in addition to that. Uh, there is not necessarily a way to appeal from every single decision at the staff level.
So just to follow up, could it be so that um there is a first stop at the board as an appellate body and then it would go to a state agency? For further consideration? Is that allowed or would that have to be legislative change?
Again, it depends on the context. Uh, for example, in in the context of a request for a variance. That is heard by the board at the first instance, and if that is denied, the person requesting the variance can appeal to the state. Uh, but that's not how it works in every in every type of request.
But I mean, is it, I understand the process is laid out, but could you insert? A governing board or a board of health uh review first? Would that be allowed? Is that a? Is that a change that could be allowed?
Uh, in in my view, and I I don't want to get too deep into um providing. A legal opinion, um, because that's not my role, especially as to City of Reno and Washoe County, but. I, uh, at least in some, as those different types of appeals are actually laid out in state law. Uh, you couldn't create that extra step in in every context at least.
Okay, well, I would just offer to my colleagues, it may be a way to solve many, if not most of the issues. Potentially, if it's not foreclosed by statute, it's something you could look at so that appeals are held. Uh, timely and they're they're held by a body that is empowered to do the work. Uh, versus go off to a state body with different timeframes, which could really extend a a time for an appeal. So just something to think about as we move forward. Thank you.
And I I think that we would all agree in the the presentation that Allison gave that the really the only option we have is amending the local interlocal agreement. Uh, the other options, the nuclear option is not a good one, as Commissioner Hartong says. Uh, but you know, to, so I think the things what we really need to think about at this point. Is what do we want staff to bring back to us at some point? Uh, I I think we can all agree on the name change, you know, the one. Uh, I I think just to help out the commissioners alone. That there's there's no tie between the health board and the county commissioner. Uh, and that they're completely separate entities. So I think we can agree that the main changes is we have to do. But then we get into the appeals process. And yeah, there's a way to appeal this thing, but you you have to know who you're appealing to. And then again, you're appealing to the same body that gave you the ticket. Or the the violation or denied your your, uh, you know, your whatever you're asking for. So to me, that I think it needs to be separated and I agree with the. With Councilwoman Beer, you know, maybe that that can be held at the the board level. And and the board would make that decision, but right now it's not happening that way. So, uh, I I just, I'm looking for your opinions as a group. That, uh, you know, we can all agree that we're going in one direction here. Uh, this is not going to happen overnight. As we said, if you're amending the local agreement, there's specific timelines for that to happen. And it's basically the last two two weeks of the year. Uh, and you have to make your attentions known. I think it's three months in advance. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McCormick. But, uh, you know, so this is this is something that's going to happen overnight. So I want to leave all the fears. That we're trying to, you know, do something in the dark night and during a global pandemic that's going to be uh not beneficial for their community. That's not what this is about. This is about making the health district more user friendly for our citizens. And we saw this, you know, not too many years ago. And uh, Ms. Jarden will led the charge on this when we weren't getting our permits out of the health district in a timely manner. Uh, we ended up having to go to the governor to uh appeal that matter. So. It's, uh, I think for me, that's where I kind of appeal, but I'm looking for all of your opinions and and whatnot so that our. At the end of this conversation, our staffs have a clear direction on which way we want to go. So with that being said, Ms. Mayor Sheevy.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Um, I I think. Councilman Dare and and Mayor Lawson just made some really, really good points. And I would say this, um, because you may or may not know this. Commissioner Lucy and I actually had been working on a lot of these um complexities. Um, even before the pandemic and then we went into the pandemic and then going into the pandemic, I think. We all realized um some of the. So some of those shortfalls um with our public health infrastructure. Um, and things on how we can improve. I I want to look at this, how we can improve upon. Our public health system and the service that we provide, whether it comes to building permits. Or um any of the intricacies that the health department oversees. I think we have a real opportunity to actually um. Put in a much better infrastructure that we can all uh be a part of and um make the system much better. Again, I think. Mayor Lawson, you said it, we're not looking at to dismantle um anything. I think. Commissioner Lucy and I were hoping to have this meeting a long time ago, but in the pandemic, um, you know, everyone. Uh, kind of had to pivot. And so here we are. So I I also want to reiterate. This meeting is not something that's just taking place out of. Out of thin air. It's, I think, been a long time coming. I I certainly think um Commissioner Lucy would. Um, also agree with that, since we worked. Uh, pretty closely together on some other um issues that we had. Uh, that our constituents were really concerned about. So I want us to look at this as an opportunity. To expand on the infrastructure and create but better um. A better health department for all of our region. And I think this pandemic, more than anything. Has shown us that we all have to work together to get something done. And I would say. Um, for me, part of that frustration was, you know, there was information that we needed, our jurisdiction. That we couldn't get. And I even know that uh members of the board, I think Councilman Dare, you pointed out, didn't have that information. And I think it's really hard to make decisions when we don't have all the information at the table. And not to mention, it is true, I think, uh. Councilman Dare said it uh again, is that we are the ones held accountable. And um, and I think that that's really important because when our constituents reach out. We we better know some of those answers. And quite honestly, I didn't know a lot of those answers. Um. And, you know, found myself frustrated where I felt like we actually could be helpful. And we basically were treated like we were hurtful. And I I don't think that that um is going to serve any of us well. And I actually think we we should all be looking at this for an opportunity. To uh build a a better health department and a better service for our community. So I want to make that really clear. This isn't about. Pointing fingers or um, you know. And any of the negatives. I think this is about an opportunity to make things better for our entire community. So I just want to put that on the on the record. So thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. Ms. Breckus, you have your hand up. Was that intentional?
Yeah, thank you. You know, in response to your question, when the first week of. January and I saw this calendar invite on my calendar. I wondered, um, you know, why are we here? What is this about? Is this about COVID? And I'm hearing it's about COVID. I'm hearing concerns and we know COVID is exact. It is made all things come to light that aren't working well, but I'm hearing a lot about COVID here and. I I think we're still in it and I'm concerned about a lot of energy to um address the health. Board, its governance and its functions when we're in the middle of this, you know. The board of health is the um, you know, to use an analogy, maybe they're the crew. Uh, you know, with the plane, you know, the the pilots, the flight attendants, and it sounds like, you know, good or bad, we're with them. They're empowered. They oversee the um, the health officer. I think we need to stay with them through this. If we want to ship the crew and get a new crew midair, I don't think that's a good idea. I really don't. But if it is about. Oh, no, it's not about COVID. It's about these broader health, public health issues. That's a different conversation. I think it needs to be governance and functions and duties. Um, we, when I was on in twenty fourteen, we we did a little tweaking to the Remza franchise issue. Um. We asked the board to help to do that and that was done. So, you know, that's a whole nother conversation. But I don't know if that's one that warrants focus at this point in time over at the Reno City Council. I mean, we have a lot of issues facing us. And um, I think we need a little daylight in perspective on this. And I also want to say, when I started thinking about this topic. I did a little research and the Kaiser Family Foundation has studied. That over a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty health officers during this pandemic have been fired. Retired or forced to resign. And I know we're talking about the health officer here, but I just think that. This conversation could be undermining the public health function and the um. And the and the um, I guess the 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 um. The the confidence that we all have in what is being done with that um. With, you know, serving that function in this pandemic by the health board and all their members and um. You know, I I haven't heard from them a whole lot and I haven't heard from constituents. Everything is difficult. And I would have thought that if the board of health really saw some functions on the administrative duties during the pandemic. They would have taken action or have done something more on that. And I just, I just haven't heard them speak. The problems that I'm hearing today. So thank you.
Okay, Chair Lucy, then then Mayor Sheevy.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. I do appreciate. Um, to Councilwoman Breckus's point, you know, I know that a lot of this has definitely come forward during a pandemic. And absolutely no more important of time than now to realize how important public health is. Uh, amongst our community, but. Mayor, you know, I want to go back to what Mary Sheevy said. We, this is not something that I believe is derived at. Focusing at making a massive shift in our public health system because of uh of COVID. This is really about a discussion about. Evolving um challenges that we've overseen over the last five, six years. Uh, I know Mayor Sheevy and I have talked. And worked very diligently on this for five years. And had many different conversations and in its aspects to the uh public health um challenges that some of our individuals are experiencing throughout our communities. And many a times, the individuals feel that there is four entities in which this they are represented here in our region. You know, Washoe County, the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and then.
Shoot, I think we lost him.
We lost Bob.
Well, we'll send out a search party. Mayor Sheevy, you want to go ahead?
Uh, well, I I I think. Uh, Commissioner Lucy, you know, was really reiterating kind of what I wanted to reiterate. Um, and and also say to Councilwoman Breckus, I think what hurts the public health is being siloed with the information. You might not be getting the information um that I'm certainly getting. And I I could give you probably hundreds of emails from people that are concerned and want to know what the Reno City Council is doing about it. And I think that that is important, that when we ask for the information, that we are not siloed out. And I'm not saying. Um, and I don't know, you know, if if you heard my comments, but they weren't that we wanted to dismantle anything or or, you know, do anything today. But I think we would be doing a very big disservice to our entire community if we did not look at how we can create better. Public health infrastructure or uh the process in which we serve the public. And I think Commissioner Lucy was going down that road. We've been working on it for five years together. I think this conversation is long overdue. If you really have been at the table and you're paying attention to your constituents and you're listening to them, this is long overdue. And um, and again, I like I said, this is not to point the finger at at anyone. I think this is an opportunity. Um, to really expand on what we've learned certainly over the last year, and it's not about COVID. We've been dealing with for five years. I I don't know, Councilwoman Breckus, have you ever dealt with the health department on on certain issues? Um, because I it's something that I do a lot and I know Commissioner Lucy does. I know Commissioner Hartong does. Councilwoman Jarden, um, Mayor Lawson, I know we've all had these long conversations of how we can approve. On the service that we provide to our entire community. And I think we have a real opportunity to do that. I don't want anyone to look at this as a negative. I want it to be a positive. And um, and I I think we better ask ourselves how we can improve. Because if if you think, um, you know, that that we're fine and we're good to go, I think that's a real issue. Um, you know, and and I appreciate everyone being at the table and really their comments because I think. It it allows all of us to just create a better system together. And I think that's what it's about, doing it together. Um, and and so I I'm sorry, Councilwoman Breckus, but I think. We've been siloed for far too long and and I just for me and and my community. Um, and the same one you live in, I think we can do a better job.
And I would be told that Oscar has his hand up, but I can't see Oscar on my screen at all. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you, Mayor Lawson. My apologies. I'm on a hotspot and when I jump on it, it starts to kill my battery. So. Um, but uh, to everyone's point, first and foremost, thank you to everyone to. To be involved so hardly in terms of public health. My hope is that moving past this meeting, that everyone sees public health, not only. And it's what everyone's in his body's term, but also just in general public policy as you guys start moving forward in terms of land use, et cetera. Great opportunity. And then I also ask everyone to continue to advocate on behalf of the health district, move into the legislature. I know. Uh, money is tight, but we're one of the smallest and lowest funded health districts across the country in terms of providing services for our general community. Um, but I respectfully listen to everybody. I'm still. But I respectfully listen to everybody. I'm still kind of I'm still wondering in terms of what it's, what's the end goal? What are we trying to accomplish here outside of providing better communication? And also trying to provide and and build on and reconcile relationships to get things done. And so, I mean, a name change, great, all for that. Changing the board for it to be better, not really understanding how it would get better in terms of providing. From what I hear from a lot of my colleagues more often than not is less government, but we're going to be providing more government in terms of adding more elected officials. If we want to do that, that's great as well. But we bring a lot of insight from medical professionals on our board and also small business. Outside of a few, and I will say outside of a few immediate issues that the board has to deal with in terms of projects, I can't say that I can particularly recall a whole list of constituent issues that have arisen to the Health District that we haven't been able to answer. I'm all for betterment, and I'm all for a better process and efficiencies. But all those mean that, you know, I I it's hard for me is for the many years that I've been on the Health District that we haven't been able to solve those issues outside of anything different from sitting on other regional boards that I sit on now. And so I'm just trying to really, as best I can and respectfully, is just try to better understand what what is it that we need to do to make things better outside of, again, providing better communication and 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 trying to find some efficiencies in some of the programs that are already understaffed in terms of, especially now with the pandemic issues that are taking place. So just trying to get those answers laid out so we can, of course, go back to our board and see how we can make things and answer the the questions that that everyone's sharing in terms of their concerns.
Thank you, Councilman Delgado. Councilwoman Jordan, followed by Councilman Dare.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lawson, and thank you for helping to pull this meeting together. And and the issues in which we're speaking of today, and I think Mayor Sheevy said it, and and Member Lucy as well. These aren't things, they're coming to a head now, but they've certainly been something that's been of concern for a long time. And as an example, I think our community has expressed great concern about lack of information about a process, who the the ultimate authority board is that oversees some of the decision making. And we as regions have have largely had to say, well, not us. That's not a valid answer as an elected official to give, in in my opinion, regarding a board that has such a great impact on individuals and businesses. And there needs to just be, to me, the the name changes is fine and certainly something I support, but I think there needs to be more quicker communications, more transparency, and more collaboration in and and providing of information so that we can adequately respond to our constituents. And I feel like there has been a choke point there. And I'll go back to, as you alluded to, Mayor Lawson, an issue that we spent a lot of resources and a lot of time to improve a situation as it related to some permitting problems. And we had to take it all the way to the governor's office to try to get some level of clarity and a resolution. And I just feel like that's that's not how that should work. There should be a a body, and not that the Health Board isn't responsive, they totally are. I just don't know that the community is fully aware of that they, their decisions impact everybody significantly. And we as electeds aren't always in the in the loop with the information, as Mayor Sheevy said. And that creates a problem for all of us that we should all want to solve.
Councilman Dare. And welcome back, Commissioner, or Chair Lucy.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's all good. You want to finish your thought first? I can.
No, go ahead. I'll follow after you, if that's okay.
Okay, you know, I do want to say that this this isn't about COVID. And the reason I want to say that is that I want to recognize that their staff, our staff on the Health District, they have been working even overtime and working hard and going after it and doing as much as they can. And and the the one thing I I know, I'm a structure guy. I teach this in college. I I put this together. When you don't have the right structure or infrastructure in place, then people get to step outside of where their covering is. And 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 the truth is that as a leader, it causes, we can't blame anybody else of what they're doing if we're not covering them correctly. And that's what I'm trying to make sure we do. Part of that litmus test of that covering has to do with information. We've talked about that. And this is, I'm not trying to bring everybody into a college class, but I'm just trying to give you an idea of where my brain goes when it comes to communication. If there's things happening and it comes back where we, as the community leaders, are finding out through the paper in things of that fashion, and especially in the ways we have at times, and and I'm wrong, I'm on the board, so I get to hear a bit more. But there are still times even on the board, I'm coming back like that. I want to make sure we're covering this staff, especially as they're stepping out. So as as much as this, I I know people want to somehow wonder if we're being negative towards the Health Board. I I am not, actually. I'm not even being, everyone who's served on there, I'm not being negative towards our staff. I'm telling you, in my opinion, and for brackets and everyone, you are hearing from someone on the Health Board, I am on the Health Board. So please don't say we don't hear from the Health Board. I'm on it. So I've been on there for five years. I've served. I've served consistently. And I am involved. You can ask. I'm I'm involved in air quality. I'm involved in all these things. I'm in many meetings. So it's not just a board I sit on. It's one that I actually care about very much. But I care that we have the right covering over it. Now, we might. And maybe there's other things we can do to help lead or bring together. But I know after five years of being on there, and COVID has exasperated it a little bit, I will be honest, of course, you know, I think everybody would be able to say that. But some of these things were in place before. Some of the appeals things, I mean, and and I see Oscar Delgado, Councilwoman Delgado is not wrong. We do get a couple of things, but a lot of these appeals don't come to us, actually. They they do go to other people, and I don't even know about some of them until I hear from constituents. And so I'm just saying, there is something here that we need to cover. Because the last thing I want, let me just talk, let me just be a board member that says, all I want to do is protect Kevin Dick and the group that serves him and everything like that. I don't want them making decisions that they go out and do. Everyone shoots at them. We as elected officials go, I don't know what they're talking about, and then they're left out to dry. It happens a lot right now, or it seems to be happening in what I see. And and the problem, again, I'm on here, and so I'm actually partially blamed for some of it. And I'm trying to say, I need to, I I need this to run differently or better. And, you know, and 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 with that, you know, and I I do think we can bring this back to a Health Board conversation. I think it's probably overdue for that as well, that we can sit internally and look at some of those. And I'll take that as a, you know, maybe that is something I'll even personally say, maybe there's something I should have done and could have done a little stronger on that. I think I tried in some ways, but that's okay. You know, I'll take it and say, maybe we can lead stronger in that way. But I I see that I I need more of you involved. We need to make sure. And it's not bigger government I'm looking for. I'm not trying to say that. And I I know that there could be concern potentially that, you know, what do politicians know about health? And they're not doctors. And I I understand that. I'm not trying to be a doctor. But the one thing we do know, you know, a doctor helps come up with what needs to be done, but we get to help the how. How does it get communicated into our community? How do we, how do we make sure we lead correctly? Because if we're not careful, we create other health crises by dealing with a health crisis. We, how do we make sure we walk forward and do it in the best health we can, covering the staff that's working and feel strong about what we're doing? And and feel proud of it. I mean, this is our health district. It's not a health district that serves whatever. This is our health district. So I I get passionate about it, but I spend a lot of time here. And I spend a lot of time, actually, I said, in extra meetings. I meet with Kevin usually weekly. And 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 he takes the time to sit down and meet. So we talk all the time. So I wanted to be careful. I'm not here to put anybody down or any of that, but I am saying something, we really got to look at this and make sure we're doing this correctly. So I can keep going on my soapbox. I apologize. But I very much care about this, but please, please hear that it needs to be looked into of how we do this best and just make sure it represents our community. Thanks.
Chair Lucy, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Once again, I apologize for the technical difficulties I'm experiencing here in my office, but I'm, you know, going back to my comments, and and I think Councilman Dare makes some really prudent conversation as well, is that this is not about finding fault. This is not about a pandemic-esque change. And I think Councilwoman Breckus said it right. We don't want to make a a change mid-flight because that doesn't make any sense. The pandemic has been difficult on all of us from many different aspects. And we're trying to maneuver that the best we can. And the only way we do that is is as a community and as as a group. And but to to Commissioner Hartung's discussion earlier is that this is a, this is an interlocal agreement that has not been looked at in over 20, 30 years. And so to come back and really take time to evaluate how we, as a region, can address some of these issues that were written in an interlocal agreement 30 years ago that would better address our current structure and our current region as we continue to grow, as we continue. And I made this comment at our commission just last week, you know, we, when we drafted many of these things 30, 40 years ago, we were a very small, much smaller community with a very different structure, with different different businesses. Now we have so many different businesses that that fall under the guidance and oversight of the Health District and need to. But we need to make sure that our guidance and is is such that we can help and continue to grow as a community and become that big county, that big region that we're we're kind of growing into and that our businesses are going that direction. And sometimes governance falls behind in really catching up on that. And so I think it's, I think this is an apt time, back to my conversation earlier, is that this is something that Mayor Sheevy and I have been working on for five years and felt very passionate about, that there's been some challenges that we needed to address. But only the Board of Health could do so. And so maybe, you know, we look at that low hanging fruit right now. You know, the discussion of how we amend the interlocal agreement so that we can change that. Or if we even have to, to change the representation from each one of our entities. You know, the potential name change. I mean, a lot of us are, people get confused that it's a Washoe County Health District when it has no governance or or oversight from the actual Washoe County Commission, and it has its own independent. I think there is some differences there, very, very similar to the Southern Nevada Health District. This could be considered the Northern Nevada or Western Nevada Health District or something of that nature so that it has its autonomy that it it truly is. And so I think that's some of the discussions that I'd like to see happen today in today's meeting about what we can do to better have that relationship and create that connection between our community and the Health District so that there there is a little bit more back and forth with them or a little bit better communication, level of communication. So there is some resolution. And I think, you know, there has been some great things. And I think as leaders, we need to have, the other thing we need to talk about, there's been some, some great victories that the Health District has had and done very well through the pandemic and in in other many different aspects they oversee. There's been things, though, however, they haven't done so well. And I think it's always time to sit back and have that perspective of how can we do things better? How can we achieve better? And back to the discussion about having non-elected officials that aren't accountable to their constituents or 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 our districts or wards is challenging because those individuals that may serve as a chair, vice chair, or a voting member on those boards, you can find yourselves not having that accountability or putting yourself in a precarious situation that you're going to have to interact with a citizen as an as an appointed member to these boards. And to Councilwoman Jordan's discussion as well, RTC is a Washoe County Board. RSCBA is a Washoe County Board, but it was represented by every board member or every entity in this community. And I think those things, but they have their autonomy. And so we want to make sure that the Health District has that autonomy as well. And I think that's important. So that's really, from my standpoint, what I'd like to see come out of this and the next, and have staff bring us back those kinds of opportunities and directions we could do and how we can consistently work together with the Health District to improve that. And I will be the representative from Washoe County on the Health District going forward. And so I am, I'm looking forward to working on that with the Health District and the Health District Officer to make those improvements and see what we can do. But as a group gathered here today, I think it's important that we get some of that direction from all of the members that serve on all of our boards. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chair Lucy, Councilwoman Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In listening to the conversation today, and never having served on the Health Board, I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I do appreciate the opportunity of looking at how we can do better. And I'm very cognizant, after six years on the council, of issues, variety of issues that we've had and frustrations with the Health District, with the Board. And and I really think that unfortunately, COVID kind of really put everything in to a glaring spotlight of how critical the Health District and the Health Board are in our community. I think up until then, we knew there was a variety of of issues, health-related, that we've always have been challenges, have been opportunities. But boy, this pandemic has just put it front and center and realized how critical it is to have a very efficient, very transparent Health District and Board, Health Board, that is working to the best that we can work in our community. And to that end, I guess what I'm looking at on the appeals side and what our Assistant City Manager, Ms. McCormick brought up on the appeals and and several other have echoed, including our public comment from Mr. Dis. On the appeals, there are certain appeals that can go to a variety of of state agencies or other things have been set up. I would like to see what appeals can't be and what appeals for our businesses and our restaurants and our community are appeals that, going back, and I agree, going right back to the same board that gave you the 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 ticket, is that the answer. So maybe what appeals don't have a place to go? And is there opportunity, if we amend the agreement, to look at those appeals? And is there, or is there a need in what areas of appeals to help our businesses and to help our community that we could pursue an avenue of of change along the appeals side of it? I I absolutely don't want to disband it. That doesn't make any sense, even outside of the pandemic. Doesn't make sense, but especially in the middle of the pandemic. No, because there's too much important work they're doing right now. And I guess the other other thought I had is because the document is so long, you know, it was written so many years ago. Really, the opportunity, like a lot of us on the local jurisdictions, do a lot of cleanup, a lot of our own codes and procedures and policies. And and is there authority, is the authority clear? And I'm hearing concern from several members on authority, too much authority, not enough, not enough, not a clarity of who has authority within the board, within the district, within the health officer. So maybe some clarifications and improvements there. And and those are just a couple of of areas that I look at to possibly make some improvements. And I think the name, for sure, but I think working forward to make improvements for the benefit of our community is something I absolutely support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've been told also that Councilmember Delgado has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. I I think a lot of my colleagues are asking the questions. I'm still somewhat, but open to hearing recommendations about how we can better support our community at large outside of more so around the public health world and and permitting, etc., and giving the community an opportunity to hear their appeals. I've heard many of my colleagues speak to the fact that they've worked over a number of years on trying to resolve some of these issues. I, too, was at the table to help resolve these issues. It wasn't just external entities that were participating in these conversations. I think it takes all of us to kind of better understand and how we can make things more efficient for for many of our members. I I really see this as a huge opportunity for us to really take back to the Health District on better communication in terms of how the flow chart and procedures work. A lot of the questions that are being asked are procedures that are already in place. So I think it's an opportunity for us to go back to each jurisdiction to better inform on on what those processes look like. I'm still not convinced enough to see the addition of or change of the makeup of the board. I really strongly believe that the board really reflects what the conversation we need around the table, and that's small business, that's medical professionals, that's elected officials. There, it's a diverse group of folks that frankly, don't also, in addition to don't have the the pressures as well to make these 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 calls to make sure we do right, as we do as elected officials frankly do at times. I know I may speak for myself here, but I know many of us on this call receive a tremendous amount of pressure, either social media, emails, news reporters calling us. That's something we signed up for. I get that. But it's also great to talk to professionals that don't have that pressure to make sure that we go back to data in terms of driving what efficiencies look like. But again, open to all discussions. Again, I signed up to make sure that we make things better, more efficient. I'm just still trying to figure out what are better, more efficient, I'm just still trying to figure out what are, what's exactly is that we're trying to make better, and, in terms of, or that we're not better communicated, and I know that's a big part of it, is the lack of communication, we can do better top of doing that. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Just a moment, Chair Lucy, we got Commissioner Hill, followed by Councilwoman Breckis. Now I'll get to you Commissioner, or Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was thinking that it would provide a lot of context to myself as a new commissioner, as well as perhaps the community and folks who don't serve on the health district board currently, to hear from the health district officer and understand how all these appeals work, and see some flow charts, and just a little bit more detail to understand the, the real issue here, so we can make the best decision. So that, that's just my input, it can be here, or it could be in a separate, you know, our separate board meetings, but I think that would be very helpful.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, that, Councilwoman Breckis.
Yeah, I mean, I think in paths moving forward, my preference is, you know, if people are looking for a simple fix, a name change, I probably wouldn't go with Northern Nevada, I would go with Truckee Meadows, because there's precedent there with the water board and the planning agency, and Northern Nevada applies to other counties to me. But I don't know if I really feel that she goes through the exercise of, you know, teeing this up just for a simple name change. I, like Mr. Delgado, am not convinced that the governance structure is one that, you know, needs to be changed at this point. It may very well be by design, and that's why I asked the question of Ms. McCormick, is, you know, in terms of appeals for air quality, it's a federal law that, that has a relationship with the state, it may very well be by design of that federal law, that local officials are not sitting in any sort of appellate body. It's a very complex, methodological standard, and it may just go to San Francisco EPA nine ultimately. So I just, I really think that if, if we want to open the whole thing up and do the examination of function by function by function, hopefully, long after the pandemic is tamped down and we're not in emergency proceedings, that's a discussion that I'd like to take back to the city of Reno. The city of Reno has had three managers in the eight years I've been on council, we're in a pandemic, we're looking at another recession, we hope not, but you know, we really don't know how this is going to play out. And we haven't even had a retreat with our new manager who on-boarded in October, and I'm afraid of a motion here today that sends the manager and his staff, that has got a lot going on, to work with the other managers on this item before the council has even had time to lay the plate, lay the table for him for the next year. We haven't even convened, and I think we have a retreat on in February. So, I don't know, if we're moving toward action, I know, I do know that often we decide to make the same motions, but I'd like to take this discussion back to our home bodies and look at it from our own perspectives and our own priorities, and, and also the questions being asked as well that people have about the mechanics of the board. Like Mr. Delgado, I think that when that issue came up, that related to the development process, it was worked out, there was cooperation among the jurisdictions, it was worked out. So that's, those are my thoughts, just if we're moving forward and thinking how we want to leave here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair Lucy, followed by Councilman Reese, followed by Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the comments that were made by Councilwoman Breckis and Councilwoman Delgado, you know, maybe I proffer this option as a opportunity in the sense that, in the, in Southern Nevada, in the Clark County, the Southern Nevada Health District, which resides within Clark County, obviously they have a very different construct down there because of the size of the county and their representation. Most of their members are elected, that serve from many different municipalities, because they have a number of municipalities that reside within Clark County, but they're also represented by business and industry that are impacted by the health district. One, what, what, what could happen here in this, this region, obviously with our seven-member board, is that we could move to more of the members being elected, elected members of, of the health district, which would provide for that accountability. But maybe if Mr. McCormick could, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, very, very similar to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, we have liaisons, specifically there is a liaison from the Washoe County School District. Liaisons from these businesses and industries that are impacted, that may not be voting members, but are liaisons to provide that type of input and perspective that many of the council members and commissioners have shared interest with. And I think that might be an option, you know, and I'm open to entertaining a number of different ways of going about that, because I think their perspective is very much important. However, that accountability still falls with the electeds that are being, that represent the majority or all of this community.
Thank you. Now to the very dapper Councilman Reese.
That's very kind, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, and it's a privilege to see all of you. I, I think, I, I understand some of the minutia of what is transpiring here today as to the renaming or the creation of an appeals process, those are things that I think are probably likely long overdue. Where I diverge, perhaps with some of my colleagues on this phone, or this meeting, is simply that I don't think that political interference with public health is a good idea. I think my colleague, Councilmember Breckis, identified the Kaiser Health News study that indicated that during this pandemic, we've had thirty-four state and local public officials and leaders announce their resignations or retire, some were, I suppose, forced out by policy disagreements, or others stepped down after they were harassed or received death threats from community members. I think when public health members are driven from their jobs because elected officials grow weary of their, you know, evidence-based resistance to more aggressive economic reopenings or required mask wearing, or relaxed social distance requirements, the consequences affect all of us. I think the concern I have with saying the solution to what ails us is adding more public, you know, elected leaders to a body that's supposed to be making scientifically based decisions, is that we, we are then prioritizing public health, or rather, we're prioritizing partisanship over public health. I think we need structural change to ensure that doesn't happen. We have to ensure that our public health leaders working at the local level are really not easily sidelined or forced out by the next public health crisis. I think there's a lot of work that can be done. I think at the federal state level, there are largely movements afoot to do that, but where the rubber really meets the road for us is in the district board of health, right? So to empower local health officials to provide factual, unbiased information, the public with limited partisan influence is a crucial component of how we're going to evaluate what we did right and what we did wrong in this, and how we plan for the future. Research, I think, is certainly, an evidence-based practice shows that when state health officials, and let me see how I can characterize it, when they have to report to a board of health that is made up of a diverse range of folks but are not elected, that they are much less susceptible to partisanship. And so I think that we would be wise to consider our options carefully and slowly, understanding that what we all want is better health outcomes. Now, again, I think that a lot of the things that have been said on this call are true, and some of the minutia of it is perhaps lost, but what the public wants to ensure is not necessarily that a restaurant who wants to expand needs to have two, you know, places to wash their hands, but rather that in the middle of a global pandemic, that the vaccine will be rolled out the right way. And so we have to really separate out the different functions of the health district, whether it's air quality, whether it's appropriate number of hand washing stations in a project or in a restaurant expansion, and that from the very hardcore science elements of it. Because even among this group of elected officials, we've had disagreements about how to respond to the pandemic, our focus should be on evidence-based practices rather than injecting additional partisanship into it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Reese. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I could not agree more with evidence-based, could not agree more. But that said, we've, with all due respect, the city of Reno, nor the city of Sparks, gets blamed, like Washoe County Commission does, for decisions or actions that the Board of Health is taking, because it's called Washoe County. We get the same thing from the Washoe County School District. We get people who cannot differentiate between us and the school district. So I think we've got four things in front of us today, and maybe we can take them one by one and see what has to come back and what the appetite is to address them, and that is the, the name change, that is the, the makeup of the board, that is the potential for elected officials to hold, only electeds to hold office, and then of course, the appellate board. Those are the, I think those are the four things that are in front of us. And, and I, I don't disagree with any of my, my regional colleagues, I, I, I understand evidence-based, and I think that many things have, there have been many decisions that have been made that have not been evidence-based. Well, I could go through those things, but I'm not going to do it right now, because I don't, I don't think that this is the appropriate time, but I, I think that we've got, you know, four things in front of us, Mr. Mayor, and, and maybe we parse those things out and see what we can do, what the appetite is to do those things. And I don't want partisanship on the, on the district board of health, or the, from the health district either, but there, there is this strong sense of the community, and you see this on social media constantly, that the county commission is not overseeing the district board of health and the, and the health officer the way that it should. And, and that's, it's just, it's just not so. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Madam clerk, I got your text, is, is Commissioner Herman wishing to speak?
I, I believe that that is who is calling from that number, three five eight zero five five five.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, please.
Okay. Um, I, you know, this has been thirty years in existence, and I don't think there's an overnight solution. I know we're starting with a plan that we are going to take some time, no rush, let's get through the COVID thing, and then we'll have even more information at our hands. I kind of agree with Jenny, Councilwoman Breckis, in many of her points, but I think we're, we really need to study this, we've got a lot of homework to do about the structure of the board and why it's that way, and I think we've got a good start. I, I personally feel that I would say put more medical professionals on the, on the board rather than elected, but, you know, that's one of those items we'll have to discuss and decide. But we really have a lot of studying to do, and it's not going to change overnight. So maybe, like I said, after COVID's done with, we'll have a whole lot more, you know, better information, but the structure that it is, we have to understand that before we can get started, so. And why they did it, the purpose, the reason for the, the health board to begin with. So I know we've changed a lot, we're bigger and all that, but we still have the same problems, just on a bigger scale. So that's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webber, followed by Councilwoman Duer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think that it's really important for us to do something, and to do something today, and the conversations that have been held are wonderful, so everybody has weighed in on this, and I wanted to mention before, or I, I wanted to agree with Commissioner Lucy, and in his idea of electeds, and then the liaisons, and I think that could be a, a really good idea, and I think we have that discussion. I know others don't believe that, but I, I do, and I think two members that are elected, and then maybe possibly adding three more from one, from entity, and I don't know if that can be done, but I think that we have to have the discussion about that, because I think it is important. The electeds are accountable to the public, but you still need the liaisons, or you need the people that are in the entity as well. So you, you need people like your doctors and your restaurants and your air quality people, you need all those as well. So, but then I like the idea that Commissioner Hartung just suggested, is we know that there's, there's at least three, and I'd like to add one more, and that is, a communication with the public. We've got to identify with the public about what the, the Washoe County Health District does, and they have not done a good job of alerting the public of what this is all about. And I, I think that's really an important factor that we have to address, and that the health board needs to address that. So that's just my two thoughts, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Just, just a few things to add to this overall conversation, and that's about that, it sounds like a number of the folks on the conversation have ideas on how to improve one or another thing that the board does. So whether it's communication, or it's advocacy, or whatever, it sounds like people have ideas. What's, what's a struggle for me in not serving on the board and not having as close a connection with it, is what problem are we trying to solve? And I think a clear problem statement would really help direct any kind of change in the future. So people have talked generally about, you know, touched on, I don't know if I'm getting enough communication, I don't understand how decisions are made, or whatever. It would be good, before we make any decisions, in my opinion, would be to have an analysis of what those things are, you know, and it may be that portions of our people that are gathered here think something's a problem, and others think it's not a problem. And so that's where sometimes conflict comes in, is that we're trying to solve things, not everyone agrees that it's a problem. Often too, staff have really good recommendations on how to make their work, work better. I often find that we're, we're a top board, we're, we're an oversight group to the health district in a way, because we've all given people to them, but often, if you can lay down a problem that you'd like to solve, often it's helpful to get staff input on that, they're working the problem every day, they know what's working and what's not working. Number three, I tend to agree that electeds are accountable. I mean, we have a sense of urgency, we are responsive to our, to our constituents, that's what kind of makes us special in a way. And many boards, including regulatory agencies, will have a group of electeds that are on the board, and a group of non-voting advisors, you know, whether they're called ex officio, whether they're called liaisons, but they're non-voting, but their presence is very important to help add independent context to a problem. So they're not the staff, they're bringing some different perspective in. And then finally, just, there seems to be a great deal of confusion about the roles and the name, and I tend to agree. I tend to think, I know that county as a whole gets held responsible for things that the district health is doing, same, the points, I think Mr. Hartung brought up earlier about the school districts called the Washoe County School District, so a lot of people think Washoe County's in charge, when really they only have one elected member, one appointed member, and they're providing staff support, they're doing the administrative support to the staff. So I guess, I, I think a name change might be very good, actually, just to clarify that, lots of regional boards have different names. In other words, it's called the, you know, whether it's flood, they have a different type of name with Truckee Meadows in it, whether it's called regional planning, they have a different name with Truckee Meadows. This board, though, I think does cover all of Washoe County, including Gerlach and so on, so that's why I do like the name, concept of a Northern Nevada, I think it's very useful. So those are just some things, before we go solving the world, please let some of us understand exactly what problem we're trying to solve, so we can be more effective in adding our two cents in how best to solve that problem.
And, thank you very much. And I, I'm also being told that maybe Commissioner Jem has a comment, we haven't been able to bring her over as a panelist for some reason.
Hi there, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, you know, I I think that I'm going to invoke my Vice Chairman Hartung's middle path perspective, and I I just don't have an argument with what anybody has said. I think all of these points are valid. I think communication as elected officials is what we live and die on if we want to have credibility. So I I have to tell you, I I also agree with the District Board of Health members and their perspective and how well they both were able to walk tho- that line there, advocating for what they know is so important to public health, but also demonstrating to us that they heard us. So I'm wondering, do we let them that they have all heard what your perspectives are, and they are very different, and see if they can't take their authority on the Board of Health and maybe come to some answers to what that is? In terms of a name change, I mean, do you really want to get started? How much I want to do name change? Washoe County School District, every door I knock as a commissioner is, oh, let me tell you about the school. And that's tough, because it's, you know, you definitely want to talk to them about the school, but it's really not per view. So it's really hard for people to navigate as citizens here, right? So I I, but I don't want to get into the weeds of the name of it, because it really doesn't matter to me, other than the fact that it helps as a pathfinder for when people need to get answers, and they need it now. And um, I I would just like to say that I can see both sides, and I think that as uh Mayor Sheedy and Mayor Lawson and Chairman Lucy all reiterated was, bottom line, we just want to make it better. Um, and more responsive and responsible and all the things that we all took an oath for. So I'm in supportive of it all. I, but what I would say, out of respect for and um you know, really admiration for the Board of Health, and I know it's been hard during COVID to get questions and answers and staff rightfully, wrongfully, we won't know, like Commissioner Herman said, and so after we can do a debrief is they had other priorities too. And, you know, having a little bit of compassion for the positions that people are now in that I'm sure they never dreamed of when they decided they wanted to run for office or be a head of a a a agency. So I I'm amiable to, I'm down for whatever. I I hear all of you, and I think you're awesome, and I think you guys all sound, you know, made me proud just listening to the whole thing. So I have no opinion other than I respect the Board of Health, I respect the District Health Officer, and I do hear you loud and clear. You don't understand a lot of those issues, or you understand the issues, and that's not enough at that point, and I support that too. So peace out.
Peace out, Commissioner Jung. I haven't heard that in a long time, but thank you. So do we have any other comments? I'm not seeing any uh if uh, so we're we're not here to take any action other than to give direction to staff. And I think that in the beginning of this whole thing, we figured out there's really only one thing that we can do or the vehicle to get us there, and and that is the uh amending of interlocal agreement. So I think staff's heard everybody's comments and and what we'd like to see come back. But I think at the end there, it was, it made more sense to me that the District Health Board definitely needs to be involved in these discussions. Um, you know, they're, they haven't been maybe as in the front as as we're kind of used to being as elected officials, and maybe that's partly our fault too. So I I'll take blame for that myself, in that uh I should probably be reaching out more to them to to get some more answers. But at the same time, uh, as being the mayor, they'll take my call. But my next door neighbor, who's seventy-five years old and doesn't understand, uh, they're probably not taking his call. So it it's, there's, there needs to be some equity there. There needs to be, and and the appeals part of it to me is huge. Uh, just make it simple, make it as simple as possible. So I'm looking for, and we're going to go uh entity by entity, but I'm going to look for a motion from the city of Sparks as to uh which way we want to go on this. And I'm staring right at all of you viewers. Councilman Dare.
Yeah, for me, I I would move to have our our staff um come, go and take what we've said and come back with some of the options they see. And uh um, on a side note, I would like to say that I do think that this teases up very good for a very healthy health board meeting, and I appreciate that, actually. That's probably um one of the key elements out of this, and that might even help staff as we watch that unfold, is that we have an internal health board conversation off of this. And so with that, but my motion would be just to clarify that our, that our, that we do look at some options moving forward of and let staff come back to us. And I actually, because of timing, different things, I I do think this is the long run too. We're not trying to do a knee jerk reaction. We're trying to just take glances and steps and be wise leaders of our community.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Councilman Dare, second by Councilwoman Bybee.
Um, also had a comment. I wanted to clarify what the motion Councilman Dare is making. So is his motion asking our staff to consider the conversation uh from the whole concurrent body today? And that we are looking at possible amending the agreement and and working with the board, the health board for input as well. Is that generally what the motion is?
Yes, that's, that'd be the motion, is that we would look at amending potential. What amendments do we think would be wise from our staff? And uh, and then also work with District Board of Health together.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what I was seconding. Thank you. I will second the motion.
Okay, any further comment from the Sparks City Council? Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, um, what are we looking at, our ballpark for timing for, I guess, all of us, you know, is it six months this year? Are we, is there a target goal we can at least shoot for?
So my understanding, and Allison will correct me if I'm wrong, we have to submit a letter that we're going to make a change, because I believe it's three months prior to the end of the year. And then we have to act upon that within the final two weeks of the year, calendar year.
And Mayor Lawson, for the record, this is Allison McCormick. Uh, the deadline for an amendment is actually that ninety days. So it would need to be approved by all of the the three bodies uh by October second in order to take effect uh January first. Uh, the the two week timeframe is for termination.
And if it doesn't occur in that timeframe, it rolls over to the next year.
Correct. So it wouldn't close the door forever, but um we'd be looking at a a twenty twenty-three effective date rather than a twenty twenty-two effective date. Um, at least from the Sparks side, I don't see any issue with uh meeting that October second deadline.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the city of Sparks? Okay, with that, uh, looking for, uh, excuse me, some call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Chairman Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate it. Um, and before we move on, and I had to go motion from my my commission, I I do want to provide a little bit more relevant information in regards to some construct. You know, as we've talked today about membership of the Washoe County Health District, currently that's a seven-member board, two, obviously two members are appointed from each entity. And then one of the final members being a public uh physician from the region, a licensed physician from the region, that practice is Madison in Nevada. That could, that is the con, that is the current construct. Now, members of both councils and the commission have talked about members from different industries and business. That is not directly written into the amendment. There is nothing in the amendment that specifically says that it has to be a member of a restaurant industry or a member of of small business. It's not directly representative. We've all discussed over the years, and I think it's been kind of an unwritten discussion that we would allow each of our appointments, that uh non-elected appointments to be somebody from that industry. So I want to make sure that that that's clarified for everybody here. And very much like in Southern Nevada, in their health district, they have an eleven-member board, very similar to ours, that are represented by a majority of electeds, eight electeds, and then three of their members are represented by specific industries, gaming, um, non-gaming business, and a licensed physician. So they do have those specifically outlined in their, in their um bylaws within their um organization. So very different from ours. So we don't necessarily have to have people from specific industry as it's written in the nineteen ninety-three amendment. But I want to make that clarification. So without further discussion, um, I want to, I look to my commission for direction from my commission. Um, I would like to support, obviously, from my standpoint, my my Commissioner, uh Commissioner Hill um and her direction, and hopefully have the Health District come back um to each entity, specifically ours, we're at, you know, at our request um to have them present to us um some potential options in regards to some resolution from the discussion they that we've had here today. Um, and hope that they can provide their own uh change and plans and what they feel is would be beneficial for themselves and also our community. Um, I think we've had uh some really robust conversation, and I do respect all of my members and and also all of my colleagues in both municipalities. So with that, um, I would open for discussion on my commission or a possible motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung.
So um and and I could not agree more. You know, I think we're missing, there's kind of a, forgive the the striking in the background, there's kind of a missing middle. Um, in in terms of the resort industry, the the building industry, those those um entities are missing at the table. So if we were to make some changes or recommend some changes, maybe that's the kind of change that we we potentially would recommend. I'm still concerned because I haven't heard from any one of the entities of of, once we take this back and have the discussion at our own boards and and when are we going to meet again as a group to parse out what each one of us have said and and think? And I mean, I I want to be a collective region. I don't want to try to make changes at the end of the year without having my colleagues at the city of Sparks and the city of Reno onboard so that we're a, we're a region and we all agree on on what kinds of changes should be made. That might be somewhat of of herding cats, but what I would ask us, Mr. Chairman, and I and I would form this uh in a motion, that we prioritize the changes um and and um look at them just in in terms of what's easiest, what's most effective. Uh, and and um try to bring that back to a a meeting in the not-too-distant future, perhaps in, you know, April or or maybe May, uh where we can have another conversation to say, okay, we're all on the same direction, all on the same page, and we're going the same direction. Uh, it's of no value if each one of us decide we want to make different changes and the others don't agree. So we we end up somewhat at an impasse. Um, and I would, I would respectfully disagree. Sometimes a crisis really has a tendency to bring out the 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 imperfections in the way you you deal with things. And and so so sometimes there's no time like the present to to make changes. I'm not suggesting we undo everything, but um, there there, it it's pretty apparent that we do need to um make some course corrections. I'll just leave it at that. So um I I make a motion that that we um, that we move forward, uh, that we um parse out the 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 discussion that we've had today, the 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 possible four directions, and prioritize those four, which is um um membership, uh appeal, um, how the board is structured in terms of of leadership, and then uh the name.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung. Vice Chair Hartung, I will second your motion and proffer a a slight amendment to that as well, is that as each entity recognizes their changes that they wish to have, that we confer that either on to a s- a singular member to um get together. Um, I could, you could recommend the chairs and the mayors to do that, or the members of the actual Health District Board to do that. Um, either way, whoever or a member to to sit with the other three entities and the managers to to create those cor- uh corrections without maybe trying to do a massive concurrent meeting or do that this again. That's just a suggestion.
No, no, and I and I would be perfectly amenable to that. I think that that's a great suggestion, actually, Mr. Chairman. And and um it 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 may streamline the process a little bit and and um you know, too many cooks could could be an issue. So I I have no issue with that at all. I just want to make sure we're all pulling the same direction. I want to, I want to make sure that there's unity in the region.
Great. So I have a motion, and I seconded. Any other further discussion from either uh Commissioner Jung, Commissioner Hill, or Commissioner Herman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I just also would like to state for the community members watching that we may go down these roads and find that we don't need to change the interlocal, that these are policy changes that can be made within within the Health District or within our different entities, or we may be just changing a name. So it may be a smaller change. We're just, we're leaving this open for the opportunity for us to learn more and do the research and come back together. So that that's the only discussion I would have bring.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Herman or Commissioner Jung?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I I agree with Commissioner Hill on her addition. That was very good.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously for Washoe County. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Bear Sheedy.
All right, thank you. Um, first, I, one of the things that I I want all of us to look at and everyone to think about and kind of write it down, because I think Councilman Delgado made some very good points. You know, he was saying, I'm I'm still not hearing what the exact issues are, right? I think we're all identifying that um things um, you know, could improve. But he he's right. So I'd like to ask all of you to really write down specifically what some of those issues are, because that's what I started to kind of kind of come up with a list, and I also started to come up with a positive. Right? Some of the issues, and then some of the things where I think we're getting the wins. And I think he, you know, made a really good point, i- identifying exactly what those are. I think you know, because um Council uh uh Chairman Lucy and uh Mayor Lawson and I have really I know we've had extensive conversations on this for many years. So I think we have a really easy time identifying it, but some of you may not. And I think that that's really important for your your clarity on what we're trying to accomplish. And and I want to say that I I'm really grateful um for Councilman Delgado over on the Health uh Board, because when I, you know, need answers, I can call him, I can get them. And so we're lucky to have a representative um over there. So that I'm I'm really grateful for. Um, and and I think to, you know, someone made the comment of maybe, you know, policy, um, things like that. Um, and and just looking about sort of reflecting on this last year of how we can really improve. And even and again, I wanted to stress this before that, because Councilman or Commissioner Lucy and I were really having some tough challenges before this pandemic hit. And we were trying to figure out how do we address them. And so um, I think at the end of the day, it is our goal to make our community better in every way. But I also think all of you were elected for a reason to make those tough decisions. And sometimes, I have to tell you, I serve on a board um that some of them are not elected officials, and they have a really tough time making some tough decisions. And I get that, right? And so sometimes our jobs are definitely not easy, but um, have faith because you were elected um for for that very reason. So um, again, I I think this is an opportunity, not something to scrutinize or, you know, the unintended consequences. I think Councilman Reese made some good points of having um, you know, science at the table and fact base and things of that nature. I think that's really im- important as well. Um, but at the end of the day, all of us are going to be held accountable, and I think we we all have to own that. And um the goal here is to make it better in in any way that we can. So with that being said, um I would ask the same as uh Chairman Lucy was asking to look at ways um at our staff level. And and I know um our city manager is tremendous, and he's he's really smart and and brilliant when it comes to these things about, you know, different structures that might help us get where we need to be to be to be better and to make those improvements, right? So looking at the different ways in which it's structured, Chairman Lucy brought up Southern Nevada. I think those were some really important points, like Councilman Jard made some really important important points. And now that we've had dialogue on this, let's look at what we can bring back to the table that would work for all of us to table that would work for all of us together to move the community forward. I think that's the real goal. What, what can we do to make this, to make this better? So Councilwoman Doer.
Sure. Let me take a stab at making a motion. And I would like to, I think we want to move forward with a problem statement, call it a white paper, call it some research to clarify the issues, to your point, Madam Mayor. We want to ask for input from the health staff and the health board on how best to resolve those issues. And I think Mr. Hartung brought up some key points about membership appeals. He did say leadership structure, but I would broaden that to the structure, to your point, Madam Mayor, and then a name. Those are some getting started issues. There may be some others that are discovered that either generate up from the board itself and the staff, or come in, as you said, Madam Mayor, from, you know, all of the electeds. So if that's a direction, I can summarize. Identify our problems with a, a problem statement or a white paper research, clarifying the issues, ask for input from our health staff and board, and of course, all the electeds here, and our staff at our jurisdictions, and make sure we identify membership, appeal, structure, and name amongst the issues to be addressed.
And the other thing is, I just want to remind everyone that we also have an opportunity to bring many people to the table, whether it's our small businesses, whether it's our epidemiologists, whether it's our physicians, our firefighters, our police officers, e-everyone can come to the table and, and certainly provide some knowledge and benefit. So just because a board has elected officials on it doesn't mean that you don't take in or bring part of your community to the table, which I think is really necessary. That's really helped tremendously. We know Councilwoman Doer and I on the COVID committee, having, learning all these incredible things that we've really been fortunate to, to understand. And so remember that, just because there are electeds on a board, doesn't mean that we can't shape this to where the community wants to see it go or benefit the community. So I, I do believe that, and bringing everyone in. There's, there's other ways to do that. So, okay, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
Oh, I, I'm not so sure that we have three different kinds of motions here. Are we all talking the same, on the same page? I, I'm thinking we're not, and I would really, I hope we are. And I think that, you know, by bringing it back to our individual jurisdictions and then coming back together with our own kind of concepts, and hopefully including maybe all of our mayors in part of that discussion with the health board.
So what I would propose to Mayor Lawson and Chairman Lucy is we go back and have our city managers work on maybe, you know, some possible structures or ideas or thoughts. And then during our mayors and managers meeting, we can meet and discuss where we can sort of hone it down to bring it back to this body. So it's much more clear and clarified. Do you agree with that, Chairman and, and Mayor?
Yeah, we're looking for a unified direction. We're not going to go in three different directions.
Good.
Aye, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I, I do think the city, the Reno City Council needs to sit and come up with one, you know, direction. I, I am afraid, and I, I respect always the privilege of the mayor to call under our charter special meetings, and the dialogue that she has as, you know, the leader of our organization with the others. But at the end of the day, this is an interlocal that gets signed off by the body. And so I think we need our home discussions. And I, I think I can support Ms. Doer's motion, which I don't think has gotten a second, with the clarification that we will sit as a body, give a chance to talk to our manager about, you know, the items she discussed, or doing nothing at all. We, you know, this is not our, in our strategic plan, we're sitting February 26th for our first strategic plan with our new city manager. And we, he may throw out a whole bunch of other things that he says, these are the critical do, do lists this year. So that, you know, if that's, if that's on the table, I think that's fine. But I, I don't want to, you know, discourage you to do your job how you see fit, but I'm also very uncomfortable that all of a sudden I show up in April 12th, I've got a summons to a joint meet, concurrent meeting, that I haven't sat with my colleagues to understand what an interlocal is, is going to look like from Reno's perspective. I don't want to be there, and I don't want-
Let me just add some language that would incorporate exactly what you're talking about, Councilwoman Breckus, which is making sure that we have the proper discussions at city council as part of this process, because I agree with you. I, I don't want to presume where we're going or what the right answers are, what my colleagues would support.
Well, I can second that. Madam Mayor?
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
I, I'm concerned about that. I do believe that our mayor and our, our, both of our mayors and our chairman have the great ability of knowing, you've been dealing, you've all been dealing with it for quite some time. You've all been around for a long time. I think that that would be the best way to go. So I don't know if I can support that motion, because I don't, I think it needs to move on. And it, and, you know, we're not on these committees. I know the interlocal agreement, if you're changing, if you're, we're going to make changes to that, we'd all be apprised of that. So I don't know that we all need to have a meeting before we can go on and, and do what needs to be done with our managers and our mayors and the committee members. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Jordan, where are you? Raise your hand. Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
Maybe, maybe the solution here is just the clarification that in staying consistent with what the county's motion and, and member Doer's motion were, that the managers and mayors in their collaborations will report back to our individual bodies before a joint meeting. I, I think there's a way to thread the needle to Councilmember Weber's concerns and, and kind of get us all to the same point. I, I don't think that's a, a deal killer here. And, and I certainly don't see this as some level of, you know, a power grab. This is a balance grab. This is a, an opportunity for us to look regionally at a board and ways to improve it. And with their collaboration and input, this is certainly no slight to, to them or the, the board members, but, and their input will be tremendous. So I, I think there's a way to, to do that, either, I think we can do it before a joint meeting. We could have the findings, for lack of a better term, presented to our individual bodies.
Right. Well, and I think also collaboration between Eric and Neil and Doug, and they all work really well together, and they're all really intelligent. So they're going to, you know, come up with some, I think, thoughtful ideas and solutions, or maybe not. Maybe they say, no, we, we reviewed it and we want to do nothing, because we don't think we, we need that, or who knows? So I do, I have faith that we can get there. Okay? So I, that's a second from Councilwoman Jordan?
It was from Councilwoman Breckus. All I did was say we'll consult with the council before we come back to the regional meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So I have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Breckus. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Back to you, Ma, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item nine is comments from the council commission members and city county managers. I think we beat that horse to death. Do we have any, oh, Ms. Bybee?
I'm sorry. Very briefly, I have a quick question, legal question for Ms. McCormick. Before we leave here, we talked a little bit about liaisons. Are we legally, I know by state statute, it states that seven members can serve on the health board, which we can decide the makeup. Are we limited if we added liaisons? Are we allowed to do that by law if it's something the three jurisdictions are considering as we go back and have these discussions?
I do see that Wes Duncan from the city attorney's office is on, so he's welcome to jump in if I overstep my bounds. My initial answer to that would be it depends. It really depends on how we structured that liaison role. Absolutely, there is nothing that prevents the board from seeking input from community members, whether that's through a official liaison role or just seeking input, input from the chamber or local hospitals and medical providers. But we would certainly have to look at whether we could legally pursue a, a formal liaison role.
Okay. So whether we just did a non-voting liaison, Mr. Duncan, do you have any other legal input on that capability?
And Wes Duncan, for the record, from the city attorney's office. So I think what we can do, Councilwoman Bybee, is based on working with staff and, and looking and trying to determine what that liaison role would look like, we can see if, if there's a, e-either any NAC or something in the NRS that covers that. And I think what Ms. McCormick said is actually correct. It's going to really, I hate to give you the lawyer, lawyerly answer, but it's really going to depend on how robust that liaison role is going to be. If it starts going into the province of something that would require a statutory change, we would, would let the council know that. But what we, what we'll do is we'll work with staff, we'll kind of carve out that role of, of what that liaison would look like, and we'll certainly get back to you with our legal opinion on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to be fair, that, you know, obviously we're springing these question, legal questions on, this would be obviously part of the research in my mind. Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, I just, as a closing comment, wanted to thank Ms. McCormick. This is my first introduction to her, my first outing with her, and I'm, I'm very impressed, Ms. McCormick, with your presentation, the way you laid out the issues was really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners or council? And I want to tell you how proud I am of all of you. This is the second concurrent meeting in a long time, and this spirit of cooperation and community is very heartening for me. Having been around for 10 years as an elected official, I, I just, I want to commend all of you for, for taking the time, number one, and for two, coming with an open mind and knowing that we all want to help. So thanks. And with that, I think, I don't see any other comments. No hands up? All right, we'll move on to item 10, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
If anybody would like to make public comment at this time, please use the raise a hand feature in your Zoom app or press star nine from your telephone. And Mr. Mayor, it does look like we do have a public comment waiting from telephone number Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Good afternoon. My name is Barry Duplantis. I'm the chief financial officer of Remza. I simply wanted to comment for the record that Remza is very privileged and proud to serve each of the communities that all of you represent. Remza is directly impacted by the decisions made with regard to the district board of health. Remza operates under a franchise agreement, which gives us essentially the exclusive right to provide emergency medical transportation to all of the citizen, citizens of our community. Our business model, as you may know, is a public utility model, which means that we are an independent organization that provides services and we essentially charge for the transportation as we perform transportation of patients for emergency medical care. So essentially, we cross each of the paths that you've laid out today. As I've indicated, Remza operates under a self-sustaining model. Remza purchases its own equipment, hires trains, deploys personnel as needed to conduct a successful business. I, I think one of the major things Remza brings to the, to the table that should be recognized is the fact that we are able to eliminate duplicity of resources. Remza deploys resources throughout all of Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County. But to the comment that's been made many times throughout this meeting this afternoon, for which I've, I've listened to from the very first word, health is very dynamic. And as such, things are happening all around us. And COVID was certainly a factor, but many of the changes that we've talked about that we need to address were in play prior to COVID. COVID just happened to accelerate, you know, the speed of a lot of the change that I think we recognize we need to make to improve healthcare in our community. So I, I simply wanted to go on record and express, express those thoughts to you. And please know that Remza, myself, Dean Dow, our chief executive officer, are available to assist in any way that we can. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
There's no other public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to item 11, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all again.
Have a great day, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.